I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pleasure of the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the States, one nation, on your eye, individual and liberty of the United States.
Welcome everyone to the April 15th meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to bow their heads in a moment of silence. The town of Elton lost one of our town employees of many years, one of our town attorneys, Gene Harmon, passed away yesterday. Gene was counsel for the town of Elton for several years and I think we'd like, out of respect, to take a moment, bow our heads, and for a moment. Thank you. Minutes of the April 1st meeting, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Absolutely.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
Some new.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Any discussion?
No.
The only discussion I want to show you'll see on the financial report that we transferred some money over into Columbia Bank, which actually gave us a 30 percent more interest rate than we had previously. All in favor? Motion carries. Lou, you have a proclamation for us?
Yes, I do. It's a proclamation for tourism month. Whereas the unique features of the Elton community include a number of destinations for tourists interested in history, local culture, artistic creations, and special activities that draw people from both the surrounding area and from more distant communities. And whereas special attractions sponsored by the Elton Alliance and Chamber of Commerce, Historic Alphane Foundation, history and geological information available from the Historic Society of Cecil County, and events conducted by a broad range of other organizations throughout the year attract both participants and observers to our community and provide opportunities for local retail, restaurants, hotels, and other businesses to prosper from the influx of tourism-related dollars to our community. Whereas unique attractions in other towns and in Cecil County that draw tourists benefit the overall local economy and support the continuing growth and development of our community. Now therefore, the mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton, Mayor Bartre, plan the month of May 2015 as Tourism Month. In Elton, we ask all of our citizens to extend a welcoming hand to tourists and visitors to our town.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this proclamation? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, they're here for the tourism proclamation. Come on down. How are you doing?
Thank you very much.
Yes, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we gonna... Do you have one for her there? Very good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
For those that, I think the mayor might have made the announcement at our workshop meeting, but Cecil County Tourism, Elton received several awards, it was in the paper, from them, for one for Project of the Year, First Fridays, and for Economic Impact for the Town, and one of our businesses was Business of the Year, Mini Hands, and also, what's the fourth one? Participation Award.
I think there were six major awards, and I'm predicting a clean sweep next year for the town of Elton. Not just for us, I think. I'd like to make this presentation to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you. And thank you.
Very good. Okay, we got Severn Trent. I saw Mr. Ken Better come in. What's his counterpart there?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce you to our new regional manager, Paul Sarrow.
Hey, come on, come on up, you can sit with Ken. I was gonna read the report with Ken not here. I was just gonna say there was no critical issues.
Well, there isn't.
There isn't, I saw it in the report. Hi, came up from North Carolina?
Yes.
Very good. Glad to have you in Elton.
Well, thank you. Wonderful big year. Beautiful weather this year.
Very good, very good. We met the one time before, and glad to have you back up. Well, Ken, what do you got to report to us?
Well, mayor and council, it's good to be here, and I just would have reported another really good month of excellent quality water going out of the plant, and both the water waste from the plant are doing really well. And just to give you an idea, in February, the total nitrogen was 1.6 again, less than 2.0, which is just unbelievably low, and BOD was 1.5, and suspended solids for three. And so the plants were performing well. And a couple of things I wanted to highlight, where we got rid of all the biosolids that we've been storing at the plant for the last year and a half, and we got rid of that a couple of weeks ago. We moved about 1,500 cubic yards of material, and we've been storing that on that compost pavilion now for, of course, this past year we've been adding it, but last year we had a problem getting rid of it, so we got rid of all of it this year. So that's really good, so that's a lot of money saved there. Talking about money, I wanted to let you know that we went out to put a bid out, solicit a bid on analytical, all the testing that we do at our facility, and we combined all of the facilities that Severn Trent operates in the Mid-Atlantic region. And so we got a lab to reduce the overall budget by, I don't know, like $20,000, so Elton will save about $8,000 a year.
Wow.
Suburban Labs, that's the lab that won the contract.
Okay, very nice.
So we're looking at chemicals right now, we're gonna look and see if we can get chemicals during the, on the Mid-Atlantic region for all the facilities. What the Mid-Atlantic is...
Eastern Tennessee, Virginia, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Delaware. Very good, 13 facilities, and if we can leverage some buying power with suppliers, then that's a benefit to us, to our clients also.
Yes, they're stock here.
So it may be a really big benefit. One thing, another thing I wanted to tell you is that, I told you at the last meeting, but we had the 20 teachers come from North Bay on March, March 20th, and we gave them a tour of the facility, and it went real very well. And they're gonna be, when we have the 4th graders come toward the plant, which is May the 19th and the 21st, they're gonna be there at the chaperone, and so we have plenty of, we're gonna have plenty of chaperones there, because we're gonna do, we're gonna do 100 children each day for that tour.
Wow.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty neat, so. But anyway, I'll send all the information to you, it's all in an email, and if you guys can make it, that would be neat, and we could take pictures of all the kids and...
Love to do it.
Excellent.
Love to be out there.
Good deal. That's pretty much all I had to talk about.
Well, I have a question for you. And of course, it's, I'm thinking out of the side of the box again, and tell me if I'm going the wrong way here. I was at the Cecil County Trade Schools the last two days, and Ms. Jennifer Byrd, the classes were great, but Ms. Jennifer Byrd handed me a bottle of water, so I drank that bottle of water, and after I drank it, I said, hey, it was fine, I saw it was from Walmart. But when I looked at it, it was, came from the municipal water supply of the city of Rochester. Now, my question here is, we've got award-winning water in Elton, would you say?
I would, I would say that.
Is it something that could be bottled?
Sure.
Absolutely.
I got another project I need to work on. Where we can put that bottling plant, and every, so much, we could put our proceeds towards our recreational programs, and maybe we can look into something like that. Does anyone else do anything like that?
Good idea.
Was it? You're allowed to talk.
Previous employer we looked at, and because, you know, I had a son that was in high school then, and he's having to buy water for lunch.
Yeah.
And his bottle of water. And I got, you know, how much you paying for that? That's a dollar. Yeah, and I thought, well, you know, we've got a water plant right here, I've got extra room to put a bottling unit in there, and how much is it gonna cost, how much water can I bottle, et cetera, you know, it's drinking water. And, you know, this was 10 years ago, but, you know, you're looking at maybe about $175,000 to $250,000, depending upon how much you want to bottle, and that sort of thing. But our drawback was, we couldn't sell it in the schools because the state, to try to get it on the state bid list was just like pulling teeth.
Wow.
Yeah, and my original thought was just, we could just sell it to the county schools.
Yes.
But in North Carolina, you had to go through the state, the county schools had to buy it through the state process in order to buy supplies, and that was one of them. So, you know, there's a captive audience right there, and...
And that's my thinking, if we could just get the Wawa's, the 7-Elevens, the rural farms, the Cecil County School Board, my gosh, it's a dollar, $1.25, no, not that bottle, of course, but most of those bottles, you're paying a couple of dollars, up to $2 a bottle. And we've got award-winning water. We've got the finest water in the country right here in Elton.
Yes, sir.
I can see that blue ribbon right on there. We've got a great sales team up there.
I love the idea.
There we go, might be something we could take a look at, but that's good. We got something that we can read. Ken, can you get on that one, maybe we can see how we put a bottling plant everything.
I'll look into that.
All right. Well, thank you. Any questions for the guys? Thank you so much, thanks for coming up. You in for a couple of days, or are you going back?
I'm in all week. I've gotta head up to Pennsylvania for a couple of days of meetings up there.
Very good.
But I'll be in and out, you know, relatively frequently, which is part of the real organization is to get me out to visit you guys, visit with Ken, bring my expertise there, and everything. And I know we've got this screen project going on, and looking forward to getting that in, and everybody lined up, tech services to come in and give us some advice and some assistance on that, and so it's a successful project, if it's done.
Very good.
It's almost here.
Yeah, it is. It's almost, we're getting close to getting that in. Well, thank you so much. Thanks, Ken.
Well, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dawn, we have the Neighborhood Youth Panel update. Come on down. How are you doing? Make sure you guys state your name in there, and your addresses, and where you're from, and I'll drink my Rochester water.
All right, thank you for having us. I was just thinking, we'll probably sell those bottles of water at the Oriole Kings for $5.
Yes, I would agree.
We have the perfect worthwhile project for you to use your water proceeds. We're from the Neighborhood Youth Panel. Dawn, written by, this is Barbara Smith, she's with the Local Management Board, and we met with Mr. George and Mr. Repoll recently. We have a request to make in the town. I was in here in October to give you all an update on the program, and we told you at that point, I think, that we've been applying for grant funding, this will be our eighth year in Elton, and we've received grant funding from Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention for the past eight years for the town of Elton program, and some other towns in the county. And we did become aware last year, beginning when we were applying for last year's grant, that the grant funding was gonna be discontinued, and if it were reinstated, it would be at a decreasing amount each year, 25 percent less than the previous year, so at the end of four years, it would be zero maybe. So we do intend to, they have reinstated the funding, we're applying for a juvenile accountability grant this year, but we have to apply for 75 percent of what we applied for last year. So we are short, and we did meet with Mr. George to let him know that we had this shortfall, and how much we were gonna be short exactly, and basically kind of talk about the program, and, you know, make you aware of what value this program has for Elton and for the county overall. Ms. Smith can kind of give you the particulars of the dollar amounts, and where our funding sources are coming from, and how we broke it down to what we came up with for Elton,
So you should have a single paper that has just the revenue sources from our county, this county budget submission on it, and you'll see for FY15, what we received from the State Governor's Office for Crime Control and Prevention was $52,850. And then the county is required to pitch in 10 percent as a match, and so this year, that came from the Local Management Board. And then for 15, we also got a grant from the Department of Juvenile Services that serves Rising Sun solely. We got some money for the first time from the VLT program, and we applied for that because we knew our funding was gonna be cut. We were looking for other ways to increase our sustainability as we move forward. And then we have, for a number of years, gotten a donation from the Fort Deposit VFW. So as we prepared the 16 budget, we had to take 25 percent off of the amount we could ask for from GOCCP, so we're submitting a budget for 39.6, that decreases the match that the county offers to 44.5. The LMB doesn't typically kick in a match to this program, it has sort of ended up under our administrative oversight in the last couple of years when the county government switched forms, administrative forms. And it's possible that this program would qualify perhaps for funding from the Local Management Board, it does fit in the strategic areas. We anticipate flat funding from the Department of Juvenile Services, and hope for it from the Video Lottery Terminal Grant and the VFW, but that left us short $13,800 for next year. So what we are asking for, the two largest municipalities this program supports are Northeast and Elton, and we have, we're requesting the towns help us make up that shortfall. And in order to sort of do that fairly, we, in the letter that you have on the second page, you talk about the number of kids served from each jurisdiction. And we ended up in averaging, in the last couple of years, about 119 kids served per year, and this is about 25 percent of the DJS kids that are diverted from that program. So that means they don't end up with a record. They could do this diversion program, 95 percent of them completed successfully. It's a very low recidivism rate, a year and a half out from completion, that do not reoffend. So it's, by all standards, a very successful program. We served 287 youth in the last two years, 67 percent of those were from Elton, and 33 percent were from Northeast, about two-thirds, one-third in terms of our numbers, and so the request we were making to make up that shortfall of 13.8 fell to about 9,246 from Elton and 4,554 from Northeast. So that is the request we're making, with the understanding that as we move forward, some things are changing in the county government, and the Local Management Board is gonna fall under the new County Department of Human, I don't know what the name of the new department is, but it's no longer gonna be under, I actually work for Social Services, it's moving over to the county. And we will have, they will have some resources to look for further grant funding, to make asks of other civic organizations, and so the plan at this point is to make a concerted effort to look for additional funding, knowing that for the next three years, we're gonna continue to be cut every year. It seems to me that this program is a perfect prevention program, and why GOCCP would actually ever stop funding that doesn't make sense to me, so we will certainly continue to ask them for support in other ways that we could look for funding.
They did visit us last month. The GOCCP has an advisory group that came down to meet with us, and they were very impressed with the program. Just as an aside, a couple of years ago, we kind of ran into the same problem, where the funding wasn't available at all. We didn't really have any warning, and at the last minute, they basically pulled together monies for us to add the program, that is, the GOCCP pulled together monies that weren't used the previous year to allow us to add, so I think that really speaks volumes. I gave you some information here, included in the packet that I gave you, there's a memo to the heroin task force, we made a presentation to them when they were here in March, you know, basically giving them some facts about the program. And it has been in the county for 15 years, it's been in Elton for, this is the eighth year now. The grant that Ms. Smith and I are talking about does cover Elton and Northeast pretty much exclusively, covered Bohemian Manor, but the other panels are covered by other funds, just to clarify. And we do have, it's two full-time employees, myself, and there's a lady that works with me, Mrs. Woods, that runs the Elton program, and she's part-time, and then we have a part-time administrative person. So we do a lot with a little. We have classes that we run in-house for the kids that we work with. We have one in particular that we added in 2013, that's very, we're really proud of, it's an all-day workshop called Life Choices, where we work with the kids, teach them about money, and being, you know, setting goals in life, and being, you know, good citizens, that type of thing. But, you know, we had, our recidivism data I gave you as well, we had pretty steady, you know, it's been a long period of time that we've been monitoring it, it's close to 90 percent of the kids don't get in trouble. And I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but the same kids that are going through the juvenile justice system, almost 60 percent are getting in trouble at 12 months, so it's pretty significant.
I think the last time you gave us the presentation, there was an age group that you work with, what was the...
It's children, they're juveniles, so they're under 18, they're between seven and 17 years old.
And, yes, and I remember Elton had, what, a few younger?
We do, here in Elton, had, the demographics are a little bit younger, for whatever reason, and, but we do get, I'm gonna say, the majority of the kids are high school age kids, so.
And...
And the people from the community are working with them. You know, Mary Jo is familiar with it, so I think many of the people on the town, you know, the town board are familiar with the program. You know, it gives them a chance to meet with law enforcement and realize that, hey, you're here to help me, not the enemy, you know, people.
Can we ask them to participate in the, you gotta help me with the name of our program that we have for the officers...
Oh, the Police Academy.
Police Academy.
Yeah, we do that.
Do they participate in our Police Academy?
Yeah, we have kids go through that.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. I'm not saying they all do it, but I know they have a limited number of kids that keep moving through it, but that time of year, we encourage, you know, they do that, whatever is available throughout the year, plus they work with the Elton Housing Authority. We have several, all throughout the county, including Elton Community Partners that they work with for community service projects. You know, we try to get them involved in things that are gonna keep them out of trouble for longer periods of time, you know, not just the time we have them.
In general, how's the board feel about if we could fund this? Any comments?
I would be encouraged to do so, because it would be my backbone, and the behavior and things like that, so whatever you can do to, you know, prevent them from being further involved in criminal things, that would be great.
Thank you, we appreciate your support. And the Police Department, I don't believe Chief Donnelly's here tonight, but they've been extremely supportive throughout the time we've been in Elton, can't, you know, doing, and they personally take kids under their wing, you know.
And I know you've been in correspondence with Steve and Lou, I've read emails back and forth, they've kept us in the loop with what's going on, and Steve, you could put this, I don't want to use the word wish list, but we could put it on our list and see if there's any way we can do some funding for this.
Without funding fiscal...
Excuse me?
Without funding fiscal.
Yes, that's correct. It's, you're looking at just a little bit over $100 a child, and when you look at that, and with a 90 percent rate of success, that's huge.
And I think it's important to note, too, given the status of substance use in Cecil County, that about 35 percent of our kids, the kids that come through this program, are referred for drugs or alcohol, and that's an important demographic for us to...
It's all part of what we want to accomplish. Well, any other questions, comments?
Just a couple, real quick. Have you talked to Northeast yet?
We have.
Okay.
We met with them at the same time we met with the police department.
Your success rate is phenomenal.
Thank you.
I've been involved in different things in Harford County along these lines, and these are staggering numbers. I would love to get involved with something like this.
Yes, we would love to have you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, you know, to the other members of the community that are here tonight, we are always looking for volunteers to be on the panel and work with the youth, and if you are interested, I do have my cards here, you know, we can get in touch with us, and we'll have you come out, you can watch and see what it's about, and then...
And I was unclear, you're not, you don't fall under the state, you're a nonprofit, correct?
We're not a nonprofit, actually, we originally started with Juvenile Services, it's accounting program. It is a big accounting program.
So accepting donations from private entities, you can do all of those things.
We can do that, yes.
All right, yes.
Very good. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Did you have business... Thank you.
I agree, it could be a worthwhile project for our water project. I agree. DJ, say a question.
I know.
Okay, Lou, it's time for your report.
The, I just have a few brief items. I want to mention that the Warner Hill Water Tower project that we awarded to Meadowland Inc., we're having a pre-construction meeting on May 7th at 1:00 p.m., and their notice received will be effective May 18th. Upon complete, we expect completion to be done by Monday, September 14th, 2015. Of the cost of this project, $526,200, $394,650 will be paid under a CDBG grant that was awarded to the town, and the town's share of the construction cost will be $131,550. Assuming we have no change orders, we don't anticipate change orders at this time. Next project is the wellhouse number two project. The pre-bid meeting will be held April 22nd at 10:00 a.m. here in the council room. All bids are due on this project on May 22nd at 5:04 p.m. We have a number of contractors who have already picked up the plans and specifications for this project, so we anticipate receiving several good bids for that project. The influence screen, I think Mr. Fiero and Ken had mentioned earlier, Franklin Miller has let us know that the project, the equipment will be delivered probably mid-May. We paid Franklin Miller $147,000 for this equipment, and Intech Engineering will prepare the bids and specifications, and we'll prepare the contract, and as soon as the equipment is received at the plant, we'll put it out to bid for installation. The county has pledged $110,000 towards this project because of the debris from the Cecil County Detention Center, and Severn Trent has pledged $200,000 towards the project. So we don't know what the installation will be, but it'll be a lot less than $100,000, we estimate. This project should come in under budget. The only other project I have to mention is well number five. Well number five is in the design phase, it's located next to the treatment plant, but there are a number of considerations that must be met before that's sent to MDE for review of the plant. must be met before that's sent to MDE for review of the plant. So, we probably won't get that project out to bid for probably four to six months from today. That's the projects we're doing right now.
Anything else?
That's it.
Very good. Okay. I have a few things. Dan, thank you for supervising to get those cherry trees up.
Your supplier's in the back, so.
Very good. We got the cherry blossom trees up. I think they look great out there. There's a very good shot that they almost look like they're going to bloom here a little bit, I think. So, we've got our fingers crossed that we might see some cherry blossoms here. So, that's going to be one of our festivals in the town of Elton as we start to carry that theme all the way through, the cherry blossom. You don't have to go to Washington. You can come and drink Elton. Yeah, we did. We did. I know that we have some folks here tonight that's going to talk a little bit about the community safety in the rear, so let them talk about it. But I think our operation saturation that we've been doing throughout the area is, seems to be paying off, in my opinion anyhow.
I agree.
And I wish the, I know the chief had another commitment tonight, but I really can't, I'm not going to get into it without him being here because he understands what we were doing there. We got an email from Dan, the yard waste, the clippings and debris is being picked up as we speak, right? We're on a regular schedule to get to make that happen. I'm still not giving up, I'm not giving up on the clippings yet, but I think we're going to have to come up with a solution where we don't put them on the streets, maybe containers. We'll continue to pick up, but that's something that we're going to work on with the budget, on how we can provide containers and what options we can do to pick those up. And lastly, what I have, and I can't really get into detail with it for the public at this point, we may have a closed meeting tonight in regards to it. But I did produce and I sent to the board tonight, kind of a concept on the Town of Elton Small Business Guarantee Program. And the board has it. One of the things that I wanted to put into it, years ago, Mary Jo, can you show that the downtown, we had a downtown master plan back in 2003, 2004, that we spent quite a few dollars on getting that made and it gave us a plan on a direction we need to, we followed some of it, some of it we didn't. But I think it's something that the whole board will get another copy of that so we can review it again and see which way we can do to maybe implement more of those thoughts and ideas. But the guarantee program, it has public funding involved in it, so I really can't discuss it right now, but I'd like to talk to the board about it in a closed meeting a little bit later so that we can give you the parameters first before that we introduce this thing, if we can introduce it, if I can get support to introduce it. So, that is all I have this evening. Ms. Mary Jo, you're on.
You had mentioned grass clippings. But I know, I know you don't want to keep going there, but I did just want to say, everyone, please go on our town websites because you will find out what day they are in your area. And I know it's difficult, but if it's somehow you could cut your grass the day before and get those clippings out and then they'll be there the next day if it's not raining. That would help Public Works a lot. I also was going to commend the police as well, but he's not here tonight, so we'll save that. One of our longtime downtown merchants came in to see me yesterday and he noticed something and I really said, we really, I hope we can change it. You know, when we did the streets one way, there were a lot of discussion about that off the Main Street coming from Delaware and I see one of our other longtime merchants out there tonight. But the sign at Main Street and South says, "Do Not Enter." And he said, "That's really not inviting. I know you cannot get through, it's one way there. Can we look to see if there's any other type of signage we could get there that might say, 'Turn Here For Downtown Businesses,' something rather than just the 'Do Not Enter, Do Not Visit Downtown,' you know." So, if we could look into that, Dan, maybe we'll talk about it and...
Are you talking about a sign in addition to that sign?
Or replacing that, if possible. I know it's needs a standard, but if there's something else that needs a standard or adding a directional signage to get people downtown. So, just a thought, I told him I would pass it on. Also, MML, the Maryland League, I don't know if anyone noticed, the If I Were Mayor, someone from Cecil County did win again from Charlestown Elementary. And Charlestown Elementary had a winner last year as well. So, Savannah Bennett was If I Were Mayor. So, I was trying to get the letter by today, but I couldn't get it. So, I just wanted to pass that on. And to more, there is an MML meeting.
Yes.
And that's all I have.
Do you have anything to say about the arts league?
I believe our...
She's going to come up there. Oh, she'll come up here in a little bit. Okay, yeah, she's on, very good.
I just had a couple of comments. There's a couple of things we need to address. And I know that a lot of things that are taking place with peddlers on the streets and on the highways. One place in particular, 7-Eleven in Whitehall Road, there's a very unsafe condition that we're allowing people to do. I don't know whether we can set some kind of a law or something in the town of Elton, but people are just stepping out in the middle of the road, wanting cars to cut over to make the turn. I think it's unsafe and we need to take some actions on it before it gets too far out of hand. Not just that, I know that they do it also at the Walmart property. And so, I just don't want to see us start allowing things to happen and then build up to a constant, everyday event for people that are doing it. I mean, you know, some people I know that they need certain things, but there are certain ways of going around doing it and I don't think that's one. So, we've got to find a way to address it, so. People standing in the aisles, right at the turn, going up the cars and, you know, that's just, it's unsafe. So, and then I'm starting to see, not just me, I know a lot of people around town, starting to see more campsites going up and we need to address that before it gets back out of hand like it was the previous year. So, I'm saying, we as the board, if we have to go as a group, start identifying sites and then targeting these. I know that some people are trying to help, but then again, I'm not for someone living out in the woods. I wouldn't want an animal out there in the woods, I don't want people out in the woods. The thing is, we're allowing camps, the town doesn't allow camps. So, we need to address it and put a stop on it before it gets blown out of proportion this year.
Lou, actually in our code or charter, does it specifically state, no camps or...
No overnight stays.
No overnight stays? Is that...
The parks close and when they close, there's a sign that no camping after hours or being present after hours. So, this has to be a law enforcement effort, saturation control and other.
Very good. I think that's, very good. I agree with Earl, let's get on.
And we are working on the Employee of the Month. It's a draft being made up. Now, I want to ask you to speak, I don't know that I'm near working now, but they are working on it because I did get a letter this week stating that it has been a draft going up for the board.
Very good.
That's it.
Lucner Van Renen, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Louis, I believe in the charter, there's something about a peddler's license. It's peddlers and something else in the charter, that's a $25 fee to ask for donations and/or solicit in-town limits.
Peddler, kind of the vendor license, not to solicit funds, but to sell.
So, I wouldn't qualify then. All right. Just a thought. And also on the internet, is our charter up to date on the internet?
Should be.
Okay. I found some stuff in there with finance that I saw a discrepancy between the copy of the charter I had and what's on the internet. I'll scan and email it to you. I spent Monday night over at Singlerly Fire Department during their budget meeting and, Louis, I need your help. The Alliance sent out a list of events today and if we could get parks and rec also to give a list of events in-town along with, Mary Jo, if you can get the rest of it, that would be a great help. I've already talked to Rob and Officer Waldridge, who else did I talk to? Oh, Steve, sorry, buddy. Talked as far as trying to help with payroll, the police department cutting expenses, getting the fire department involved. And I need some more information as far as how many events we're actually going to have.
The police actually had a list of all the Alliance. I worked with them in January, they get sent a list for the entire year.
Awesome, thank you. And do we have anything as far as evictions? I was talking to Dan the other day and he's got a great point. He's given me a list here, I'll put a proposal together for everybody, of about 10 properties that DPW has to get rid of. The landlord evicts, all of this stuff is put out on the curb. It should be their responsibility to take care of all that stuff.
They have an ordinance, it's probably good.
And Dan supplied me, he did a great cost analysis and it's almost break even. But even at break even, if I was the landlord and I'm cleaning out somebody, I would want DPW to do it because it's pretty inexpensive for us to do it compared to hiring somebody to actually come and take the stuff away and send it down there. And the unfortunate part is Dan was trying to mobilize everything yesterday and he had the finish-up button was to pick up tree limbs and everything else. So, it takes man-hours away from DPW for things like that. Has that ever been an issue before? As far as, has it ever been rolled up before DPW shouldn't be doing it?
It was an issue when we passed an ordinance that governs the removal of that.
Are the fees too low, maybe? Are the fees too low, maybe?
We'll build them.
Right, but are the fees too low, maybe? Can we take a look at it, is what I'm asking for?
Yeah, send us all the list of what the fees are, we'll take a look at it.
And I have, Steve, when you send, I know you have about two weeks left before you have to send everything to Ed Donovan, I think his name is, through the water study.
Ed Donovan, right, it's Financial Services.
Yeah. Does that send it on a Excel spreadsheet?
Some is, and some is Word, some is Excel.
All I needed to know, thank you much.
You good?
Yeah.
Charles, you have a comment?
I'd like to commend the police department for their saturation control, I think it's been very effective. Earl, getting back to what you said, I think that's a very valid point. There are a lot of people, I understand, starting to live, rob behind Kmart, that there's campus back there. I know long ago, when they were behind Boulevard and Broad Street, the commissioners and the mayor went on a tour over at the tax center, but the campus, like, certainly it wouldn't hurt you to go there with the police department to see what's over there behind Kmart. And Louis, did you receive anything from Elton High School from the principal and...
Yes.
Ever?
He said he invited us to make a presentation on the 28th of May. There's an advanced placement class at 7:30 and an awards or an honors class at 12, I think 12:50. An odd time, but I think that's a few hours.
It's the first period of the day and the last period of the day. And basically, I guess what the principal was saying, and Mr. Lemon wanted the town to get involved at the school and vice versa. So, he's offered those dates or that particular date and those times, if the board wanted to collectively, individually go over and talk to the class. And it's an AP class, so, you know, Louis will provide us with some information. I think it would be very good if we show up first thing in the morning, meet with the kids, introduce ourselves and let them know how the family function. So...
I'm good.
I like Louis.
You're on.
Or Mary Jo, or Earl, or DJ.
Good?
Good.
All right. The Employee Recognition Program, Employee of the Quarter Award is on our desk. Thanks for sharing, it was...
Okay, this is time of the meeting. We open up the floor for the public to speak and I've got, of course, I know there's going to be some folks that want to speak that didn't sign the list, but first up, we got Mr. Ron Waldorf, come on down, I'm 242 Douglas. I know Ron actually spoke to me about, wanted to talk a little bit about stricter fines.
I'm Waldorf, 242 Douglas Street, Elton. First thing I want to say is that...
You can pull that to you, Mr. Ron.
The first thing I want to say is, it took me 52 years to find out that I'm eligible due to an honorable discharge that I'm to receive benefits. And I was told by a young lady, "Do you drink more water?" Where's that water at? I'd like those, I've got a 55 gallon drum, I'd like to fill up.
I hear you. Here.
No, the water you're talking about.
I got it, we got the water for you.
That's what I'm talking about.
We got a spring.
I'm just kidding. Yeah, stricter, stricter fine. The area I had been in, people walk their dogs, some are on leashes and some are not. But they just choose to leave themselves at their discretion. Not the people, but the dog, not as... Consequently, you have, if it's on your front lawn and something doesn't pick it up, you've got to, after you step in it, more than likely, you clean it up. And this is continuous, in winter and summer. And it seems to me that the people that are doing such, some of them don't even live in the area at all. They just bring their dog over there from another area to relieve themselves. And I believe in the warning, I definitely think they should give a warning from the town, but when it becomes where it's not a mistake, it's intentional, so they don't have to clean it up in their own yards, is the way I look at it.
Ron, are they taking the dogs for a walk onto town property or is it still in private property?
No, it's town property.
Town property.
Yeah, this is town property.
Okay.
Definitely downtown property, but there's also private property involved. Mine is private property and my neighbors and so forth. Yeah, give them a fine, give them a fine. And I'd say give them $200 fine. They'll learn, they'll learn, that's just what it's going to take. I would expect, I had an idea the other day that I should have been fined, but I wasn't. And I'm grateful for that and you know what I'm talking about, you all know what I'm talking about. But mistakes, when you intentionally do something, then you're, I'm going to call you a bluff, basically.
Lou, can we, thank you, Ron, can we take a ride over there, maybe, in fact, I'll be around tomorrow, maybe we can take a ride and see if there's anything we can do over there. I don't know, we certainly can't put surveillance up, but maybe we can take a look to where the dogs are going. At least we'll get a better ident, identify a little bit better. Thank you, Ron.
It's right there on Lucas.
I know that there's a right-of-way through there and that must be where they're going. Ms. Margie Blystone, come on down, 14 John Adams Lane.
Yeah, I don't even have to introduce myself.
You want to talk about the A and E District? I see a beautiful...
Yes, I'm going to do my Van Wilder impersonation here.
Yes.
Our new art loop banners. You're going to see the art loop banners on first Fridays downtown at each participating venue. We secured a grant, the Elton Alliance Security Grant from the Maryland State Arts Council. So, we have several of those and we're anticipating being able to give more because the art loop is growing, more and more people are being a part of it. So, I also wanted to let you know that we now have rack cards and this is to lead people through the art... And this is to lead people through the art loop, make them aware of the different venues that are involved during First Friday events. This is courtesy of the Cecil Guardian. Bill Defraeus had 2,500 of these printed for us. And these are going to go out to the rest areas, tourism office, and the local hotels. I am thrilled to find out that local hotels are begging us for information so that they can pass them on to their guests. So very excited about that. Let's see. The art loop banners will go out not only First Fridays, but any time a participating venue in the arts community is having an event. So you may see them out on a second Saturday at the Palantin Page when they have their creative camaraderie with their artists. So we've been telling anybody who is having some sort of event, Minnehans having, you know, a performer or something, they'll put the flag out to make people aware that something is going on in the arts and entertainment community. I also wanted to put a reminder out that next Wednesday is Restaurant Impossible Night with Lyons Pharmacy, and that will air at 10:00 PM on Food Network. So that's going to be a big night for Elton. Town Hall meeting will hopefully have a big, play a big part in the show.
Somebody got cut out.
Who knows, we'll end up on the Pentagon floor, but it will definitely be very exciting for Elton, so I wanted to remind everybody of that also. If anybody's interested in RAC cards, let me know. We have, we have a bunch of them. Also, you can go to the Facebook page, Elton Arts and Entertainment. I'll keep that updated with the events that are going on downtown. All right?
Margie, who's funding the banners?
The banners were funded with a grant that was submitted by the Elton Alliance to the Maryland State Arts Council.
Very good.
All right.
Is there a, is there a link on our website to yours?
I don't think so.
Are you?
Is there? Okay, great. All right.
I'm glad you mentioned RAC cards. That was actually printed out about RAC cards. Yeah. Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's crazy.
Well, I will say again, this is many thanks, 2,500 of these printed by the Cecil Guardian. Bill Defraeus had these printed for us. So that was a donation from them.
Very nice.
And we're thrilled to have them get this out to the community and to our guests coming into Cecil County, so they will know of all the wonderful events we have going on.
How many people would you say we had in town Friday?
I went around to the different venues. Let's see. This was my first time as representative of the Arts and Entertainment District, not owner of the Palantin Page, so I went to each of the venues. I would say all in all, there were probably about 300 people.
Very nice.
So it was, it was a very good night. I talked with all of the different venues, and they were thrilled with the turnout that they had, so.
Very good.
I heard about Gracie's, but their line outside.
Oh, yes. Gracie's Cafe, each Friday night now, they have a line at 7:00 PM for people to sign up for their acts for the open mic night. And that is just thrilling. They had a full house this past Friday night, which is wonderful because there were over 50 people at the blues jam at the college.
Wow.
So this is really growing. And First Friday in May, Gracie's Cafe will be celebrating their anniversary party, so that will be a big night. They're going to have 20 acts that night, so they'll probably go till 11:00 PM, and they're expecting a full house that night also.
Very nice.
So we're growing, we're going strong, and just all sorts of wonderful things happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I could add one thing to the reveal for Restaurant Impossible. One business wanted to support another, so the reveal, reveal party and showing will be at Minnehans that night, so, and Lyons Pharmacy wanted to do that.
Very nice. Okay, we got Ed Moller.
Yes, that's me.
328 Wolond Lane. Come on down.
Yes, I do not live in the town of Elton.
You're old enough.
However, I shop here, I work here, and I live here.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me. Commissioners, it's a pleasure. Gentlemen, young lady, I'm just giving you some literature about the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. I am, I am a field advocate for the foundation, as well as a facilitator for support groups, which, by the way, we have none in Elton.
Wow.
Thank you, sir. The reason I'm here tonight is because I requested permission from your town to have Cecil County's very first annual Out of the Darkness Walk for suicide prevention. And I'm not sure if you folks are familiar with the foundation or the work that it does, but the AFSP is a leader in the fight against suicide. You may not know this, but 25 million Americans suffer from mental health issues yearly. A person dies by suicide every 12.8 minutes in this country. Every day, approximately 112 Americans take their lives. The highest at risk is our youth, our teens. Some of you have teenage children, some of you have teenage grandchildren. Also is law enforcement is at risk, and our military is at risk. The sad part is that 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health disorder. That's, that's sad. So the foundation has four main goals. Fund the research through science to discover treatment for mental health issues, not just depression, bipolar, anxiety disorders. It offers educational programs. Many counties, I am from the Maryland chapter of the foundation. Many counties require their schools to train their faculty on recognizing the signs, both of depression and other mental disorders. So we offer educational programs, not just to our schools, but even to the FBI, to law enforcement agents, agencies, and to events. We are huge advocates for policy. I myself was instrumental in the new policy that President Obama just passed, the Clay Hunt Act for suicide prevention for our military. It's going to give them great funding so that we can provide our servicemen, the men and women who fight for every single right we and privilege to enjoy. And that's huge. So advocacy is huge. I'm getting ready to attend a Fourth Day Forum in Washington, DC to continue my advocacy work. And mostly the foundation supports those who are affected by suicide. And I can guarantee you that someone in this room has been touched prior. What drives me is the fact that I too have been touched prior. I don't understand why, as humans, we wait till it affects us and touches us directly before we do something about it. But my fight and my fury have turned into passion. And this walk, I could have chosen any other location for this walk, but guess what? I want it Elton. I feel that we have, as a first walk ever, ever, it's a historical thing. It's a beautiful town. It's a growing, it's growing, the economy is growing. I think it's the perfect exposure to increase awareness, especially with Union Hospital being so huge on the top of the list. I think that we need to educate our citizens, we need to get into our schools. Bullying is a huge factor. I know that there are bullying laws, but I think we can do more. And I offer you my help in the future on any issues pertaining to educational programs. I offer you my help as an advocate to come and sit down with you and establish a program, whether it's in our schools, whether we want to hand out brochures, whether we want to have speakers that have suffered the loss. And again, we do not have a support group in Elton. We have one between Rising Sun and Northeast. And the only reason we have one is because the lady who started the first support group lost her husband to suicide. He had two attempts prior to committing suicide. His third was his final. So he struggled all his life. So she established a support group. I went to that support group on Tuesday. Eight participants, a lot of grief, a lot of pain. We could do more. We don't have one here. And it's no secret that we have a huge drug problem. Did you know that there's a huge correlation between drug abuse and suicide rates? Of course there are. I work in law enforcement. I see it every day. I see teens and grown people in trouble with drugs. And guess what happens when they give up because their life to them is no longer worthy because they can't get ahead? They can't get through the drug struggle. So I'm asking for your permission to host our first walk in your beautiful town.
Very good. Lou, I think I saw it went through the channels.
Yeah, I think she's coordinated with Lieutenant Waldridge.
I have them ready. I know that you have a pre-established prep, and I took the tour of it. It's perfect.
Do we need to take a vote on this?
I think the board should approve. I'd say this is a historic event, actually.
It is.
And I think the board would, should approve that it happened.
Do we have a motion to accept the date of September, where'd it go?
September 12th.
September 12th for the first ever American Foundation for Suicide Prevention Walk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
You're wonderful.
We got the walk.
Ah, we have the walk. Guess what? The webpage and the Facebook page will be up on Friday.
We're happy. We're happy about this.
Thank you so much.
I'm actually on your website right now. How many, how many people should we expect? Have you done this before?
That's a good question.
Where have you done this before?
I have participated, but again, this is the first walk ever. But we have chair of conference calls every month. There are many counties in Maryland that have had their first, that their first walk was last year. We can anticipate, depending on how well we do recruiting.
I'm going to walk in that walk.
I'm so glad. I'm so glad.
I'm sure we are.
50 to 300 participants. 300 is a lot. So yes, I would love that.
Thank you. I see that the closest chapter is Philly. So you have a chapter in Philadelphia and Boonworth.
We have a chapter in Hartford County, we have chapters in Haverstown, and lots of other counties in Maryland.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have, you were talking about you going to schools and training staff. Are Cecil County Public Schools staff trained in this?
I don't believe so. I can't be 100% positive. I know that the literature has been dispersed, but I don't think it's one of the counties that has it as a mandatory requirement. And we are working on passing that law right now in Congress.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening to all.
Thank you. Okay, we have, next up, we have Ms. Teresa Dill from Collinsworth Manor. Come on down to talk about community safety. The group. Come on down.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, ma'am. All of you, get your name, Teresa. Put your name in there and your address.
Teresa Dill, and it's 270 Collinsworth Manor.
Dan, could you get her to you, please? Thank you.
My name is Patricia Rock. I live at 227 Collinsworth Manor, and I'm also the property manager of West End Hotel for the last eight months.
Carnation Chalick, 100 Huntsman.
I think I have a couple of things that we wanted to address and maybe get some feedback. They had me do it because they call me the pit bull out there. Because I kind of put my foot down when others don't. I was told 15, 20 years ago, my officer Jeffries, I needed to take my community back. And there's just so much that's happened since then, and we still have good people there.
Agreed.
And unfortunately, it's not where we all want to live, it's where we can afford to live.
I understand.
Carnation had, drew up this, and she's a little frightened, so.
You can sit down. Sit down and relax. We can pick it up. Sit down and relax.
I was wanting to know if it's a possibility, if we can have a substation in there for safety concerns. There's a lot of activities happening at night, and it's hard to see because there's a lot of dark shadows out there.
We know that the cops have stepped, they have stepped it up.
And, and you know, I'd like to say, and this is probably, I wish that we had the chief or Captain Zerillo here to talk about that, about the substations. And I know that there's some advocates on the board that would have interest in that, but what they're stressing to me, that each one of the cars are mobile substations. Now, they've got all the technology in the car, that you don't really have to have a substation if they stayed in the car and really made it through there on the saturation on a regular basis. But it is noted, we'll find out.
I read through the grapevine that in Perryville, during their town meeting, that landlords are now getting fined for their tenants. I always want to know if there is any way that our landlords can be a little bit more responsible for their tenants, who's living there, how they're making their yard look trashy, and then it makes our community looks trashy.
Yes.
Even if the landlords have the right to do a drug test on their tenants, or, or look a more thorough background check, not just here in the state of Maryland. People move here from Delaware, they move here from New Jersey, they move here from the other side in California, if they could just be a little bit more thorough with who they allow in their homes. The methadone clinics, we definitely don't want no more, no more clinics popping up here in Elton. Their location is drawing more people in.
I'm not saying that the methadone clinic is bad, but I've had several people come to me with my nursing background and say, they don't want to take me down. And I said, you have to be adamant that you feel that you're ready to come down in your douches. If somebody's been cleaned for two years, and they want to come down in their douches, they should be allowed to do that.
I would think so. That's the whole purpose of it.
Two years is a long time. So to me, it's a money racket, as far as somebody being cleaned that long and feel that they're ready. So that, that was another issue, but they shouldn't be able to just go on methadone until the probation is over and then be done with it.
Or use it as a method of getting.
And as you know, we've had, we've had a lot more crime and another homicide. I've been on the case with a missing boy since stab one, and I refuse to give up that until we find them.
Agreed.
I'm not saying put a camera at the corner of every street. If Carnation and I had possibly helped in that last one because that boy came running through the parking lot at Oceanic, there would have been cameras in the front, at least at the entrances, they would have seen him. But I said to Carnation, we went up to the scene, and I said, we need to talk to one of those officers, and we need to tell what we said, what we seen. And we did that. Had we not done that?
Thank you.
I don't know what would have happened.
Thank you.
I don't think so.
At Oceanic, they don't have any?
But we were able to say, what I had, I had texted a detective that I work very closely with on some things, and had said to her, you need to start at the liquor store looking at cameras. And that's what I had texted her.
They also searched the hotel. I searched every room for the guy they were with.
And I called her, I told her he possibly went to her location, which she runs, and said, can you do a check for me?
Thank you for your help.
We're trying, we're trying real hard at the motel.
I don't, I don't know that, I can't say that they won't because they did it last year, and that as come summer, police patrol will be biting foot again in the area, because I think that will help. You can talk about that because I'm not.
More recreational activities located in the heart of our county. More recreational activities located in the heart of Elton. More things on Main Street. Redoing our park at Meadow Park, the basketball court, doesn't really look like a basketball court anymore. We have volleyball set up, sand, more of a litter box for stray animals. I think we really need to focus on our youth and activities, bringing everybody together.
Trying to keep these kids off the drugs and selling drugs on the corner and giving them something to do. There's nothing for these kids really to do.
My children are 11 and 10. Every year from the age of five, we go to Charlestown and Northeast. It's a free fishing tournament. My kids love it. They've made magazines, MSSA. They enjoy my children. I never hear of a free fishing tournament for children out there. And we have great body sports.
And I'm sure that you have two volunteers sitting right here that would.
We should. Thank you.
We want to take our community back. And we have a lot more people that want to come. So you're gonna start seeing, you are gonna start seeing these faces at these town meetings. So don't be surprised if we don't start bringing people with us. And we will weed out the ones that we think that just want that ear to see what's going on. I promise you that.
I'm loving it.
If you're dirty, then don't even bother, because I don't have time for it. I don't have time for it. And Mr. Mayor, you know me, and you know that I'm very open, and as you know, and you know that I speak my mind, and that's who I am. And that's the way you are today, in my community at least.
We're gonna get that community back, and we're here to help you. And it's been a long time that we've allowed a lot of things happen, and we've been at fault, you guys have been at fault, the whole community's been at fault, but we're ready to make it happen.
If I had known what I'm going to do, they'd have me under the jail, because I don't know how that I haven't been arrested for being out there for disorderly conduct, telling them, you're not parking in front of my house, doing your drugs, go down there and park where you got them at. I mean, I come out of my house just a flaring and a raring and a bullying and, you know.
She's that pit bull.
That's that pit bull in me, and I don't tolerate it. I have children, and I have grandchildren.
I follow you all the time on Facebook. I see everything.
I've got 14 grandchildren over there, and I, in both sections of Collinsworth Manor, the townhouses and the homes, I just wanted to have something to do, somewhere to go, people who care.
And you know, we really appreciate that. We've talked about this, and I know it's been like a broken record when we talk about recreation all the time. We've talked about Meadow Park and what it looks like today, and it could be so much better. We have some challenges over there, but I think that you'll see some changes here in the near future that's gonna be very positive for our community.
But if there's anything that you can have us do also, and you want to voice that to us and get us involved.
I know how to get in touch with all three of yous.
We'd be very welcome to do that.
And listen, we're very appreciative of the offer for help.
Because that's where it's gonna start.
There's more volunteers. There you go.
I'm always looking for volunteers.
There you go.
Well, you know, I depend very well. She's my fiancee's cousin, so Kim knows how to get a hold of me.
All right.
Thank you all.
There was one thing that you had mentioned earlier about the homeless.
Yes.
I have a real bad concern behind the hotel. I have gotten rid of all the needles, all the bags, all the drug dealers, trying to get rid of the homeless. And it's all they do is sleep in our woods, they drink in front of the children there, they're shooting drugs in that, and nobody does anything. I mean, I did have one man arrested. The other run from me because they're scared. I've got a bad reputation of being a needy. It's really bad underneath that ridge by your sewer plant.
We have to take a tour.
And you start fires, and you see smoke.
Yeah, there is a problem there. That's all.
And they're all over the motel.
Charlie and I, and Charlie and I went back here right behind the hotel a few months ago, and the traffic was going in and out, in and out.
Yeah, and we tried to keep it clean, and our tenants are out there buying lunch, and they're all cleaning up. And we turn around two days later, and it's trashed again.
And what's frustrating, we'll have the, you know, there's a place for everyone to have a home that lives here in this, in this community. But they're non-compliant folks. They just can't comply with this, you know, I don't want to say the system, but there is a home for them every night.
Most of them are on social security.
But they just can't comply.
Well, that's because they'd rather take that social security chart and buy drugs instead of having a place to live.
And let's put them somewhere.
Well, no, their check needs to be taken from them also.
Well, thank you very much for coming in tonight. Oh, you got more?
Yes.
Lay it on me.
I have two more. For the homeless and the low-income families, we need a local career fair here in Elton, not in another town. Our unemployment is more here in Elton than it is in Northeast, if you ask me. Or opportunities to volunteer with, what's that word?
Incentive. Incentives.
Maybe there could be a raffle. Or just give them a gift card to Hurricane McDonald's, or, you know, just, if we can get them out there off of their butts instead of throwing their honey bun trash in the ground to pick up other people, maybe they can respect their community a lot more. And another one is, when I was growing up, we had a Big Brother and a Big Sister program. I never hear of that anymore. And then I was told that our Boys and Girls Club on 1st Street is gonna be closing soon. Is that true?
That's true. Right now, it's closed till the summer program.
Only for the summer program?
It'll be open up for the summer program.
But it's not an all-year program anymore?
It's not determined as of yet.
Oh, okay. Because that breaks my heart.
Mine as well.
Lack of funding.
Lack of funding. Now, could I just volunteer there?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You know where my office is.
Yes, I do. I've been there.
And just come in, and we have to do a background check on everyone, and we'll get that cleared, and we would love to have you volunteer.
And that's all the issues.
Thank you, and I expect you guys to be back at every meeting.
And we will be.
Thank you.
We will be. And don't be surprised if we don't start bringing more with me, because I intend to start going through the neighborhood and saying, oh. We went to a town meeting, and.
Well, we, I'm sorry.
We need, we need people, and we need people like you, and we want to take our community back. What do you think? It's gonna take everybody, you know? So the good ones, I'll bring. The bad ones, I'll leave behind, because we're trying to get rid of them.
Well, Neighborhood Watch.
We can take them next door.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
The Neighborhood Watch, the Police Department has started a program, and the pilot is in Walnut Hill Community. And they're meeting at the Cecil County Library once a month. So really, I would talk to Chief Donlin, and he can give you some pointers and get the police officer that's involved that started that program. They're doing extremely well.
Okay.
All right.
I've got you all to worry about.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have anything to say this evening?
Yeah, Rob, just want to mention one thing. As far as the mine shows for the business people.
Yes.
The guardian one, maybe have 800, this leadership or the thires and so forth, businesses. I don't have to say I got 1,200.
Wow.
So he needs two weeks' notice to be able to increase the pay rate. So he's having me take the nearest addition to that. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And I'm putting the businesses in there. We got two more. One was in town, and one is out of town at Coates Fair Hill. And I've got, I've got a lot, a lot of places to go. I've been doing a lot of traveling here. But it's, it's working. It's really working.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna actually adjourn the meeting, but we're gonna have a closed meeting to discuss, consider the investment of public funds and to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. Do I have a motion? And a second by Mary Jo, all in favor? Please clear the room.